Call meeting orders. You two please stand for an opening prayer importantly. Mr. Cameron and Rupert.
Let us pray. Father, we just thank you for this evening and the Lord would just pray for your wisdom and your direction tonight. And I pray, Lord, that you would just be with our nation, be with this city, and be with our leaders, Lord. Guide us and direct us in all we do. We will be all praising the Lord in Jesus' name. Amen.
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible) United States of America and City Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Under Mayor's announcements, appointments, and vote, I'd like to make an announcement. We had a work session scheduled for today at 5:30, which we canceled. Plenty of time to let everybody know, we needed to do some more research on that item regarding the city property at Farm Route 174 in Oakwood. So some more research needs to be done, and we will reschedule that for a future date. Also, I'd like to make the announcement that we will again be participating in the City of Republic in the back-to-school sales tax holiday, which we do each year. Certain back-to-school purchases such as clothing, school supplies, computers, and other items, as defined by the statute, are exempt from the sales tax for this time period only. The sales tax holiday begins at 12:01 a.m. on Friday, August 4th, and runs through Sunday, August 6th. So remind everybody to shop Republic. I have no public hearing. On to citizen participation. Anybody wishing to speak to anything not on the agenda, please step to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll have five minutes.
Five minutes? All right. Well, I think I can do that then. My name is David Burton. My address is 2311 East Kentwood. And I'm also the county program director for Green County Extension, and that's the capacity that I'm here speaking about tonight. Two items. Under state statute, the City of Republic is eligible to have a nomination or an appointment to the Green County Extension Council. Any city over population of 10,000 has a nomination to that council. So our current nominee from the City of Republic has been Ron P. Bidey. He's served for about two years, so his term's kind of coming to an end, and I wanted to bring that to the city's attention. If there is someone who's wanting to serve in that capacity, or if you have an idea of someone that you would like to nominate to the Extension Council, that's something you can do. And I'll pass around a brochure about what the Extension Council is and what they do, since you may not be familiar. And that's just something we can coordinate by email, or I can visit with the city administrator or something over. Or if we come up with an idea of someone to nominate, we'll make a suggestion even too. But I wanted to let you know that under state statute, that is something that's open to you to do. And then secondly, I have some information I want to share about an Excel leadership program that we're implementing in western Green County. It involves Ash Grove, Willard, and Republic. It's in partnership with the Green County Commonwealth and the Republic Chamber of Commerce. The goal is to develop, to find emerging leaders in those communities, and to develop them into future leaders. Excel is a statewide leadership program that Extension does in other cities. The one here is a little different in that we've partnered with the local newspaper and are doing some things with that leadership team to kind of help foster community discussion about issues and solutions. Anyway, the whole information packet explains it better than I could, and it would take less time than me explaining it to you. But I've been with Extension for 15 years, and this is the most excited I've been about a program. You may not look that way right now, but it's been a long day. But this has great potential, and throughout the state, when we've implemented an Excel program, we do it for multiple years, and there's always a great track record of growing up new community leaders. And I'm guessing you don't want to serve on the city council forever, so we'd like to develop community leaders that might take that role, or fill on a zoning committee, or even help plan a community event like Pumpkin Days. That all takes leadership skills, and that's the end goal of the Excel program.
Great. Thank you, sir.
Any leftover packets or brochures, just leave them here at the city hall. Maybe somebody would be interested. Or if you know somebody that you think might be a good fit for that, please pass that information on.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I've got to run. I hate it when people do that, but I have an event back at the Botanical Center, so thank you.
We understand. All right. Continuing this citizen participation. Anyone else wishing to speak to anything not on the agenda, please step to the podium, state your name and address. Now, five minutes. Seeing none, citizen participation is closed. Need a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda?
Motion. Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero. When we start an old business, I need to explain that Resolution Number 17-R-51 was tabled at the last meeting. We voted to take it off the table. However, we did not vote on the actual resolution, so that is considered unfinished business, and we need to reopen that and take a vote on the actual resolution tonight. So Resolution Number 17-R-51, a resolution of the city council, the City of Republic, Missouri, accepting the bidding process and cooperative purchasing terms between In situ Form Technologies USA LLC, the City of Independence, Missouri, and authorizing the city administrator to execute a contractor agreement for the rehabilitation of sanitary sewer infrastructure. Need a motion and a second?
Motion. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Mr. Cameron?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, as I mentioned at the last meeting, this is something that I'm asking to be removed and not something that we basically support at this time, basically in lieu of doing an I&amp;I study, which we approved at the last meeting. Over the last several years, we've spent in excess of over $500,000. And we need to be able to show that what we're getting for the money, it's not saying that those improvements did not benefit the community, but as we begin to look at an overall approach for how do we address stormwater getting into our system, I think that we need to have a holistic approach and then present each year how we're going to be funding that, so that we know what our money's going specifically to. It's not saying that the areas that Craig had mentioned in the last meeting do not need some sort of spot repair or that do not need attention. They can still be addressed or looked at, that we could televise it, look at it, and look at what needs to be done. But I think until we figure out where all the water is getting into our system from one overall study, I would just encourage us, not to approve it as it is until we get more information as to where we need to be focusing our financial resources and understand what type of return on investment we're getting for those improvements. So that's my recommendation.
You have any questions, comments, or concerns, discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Motion fails eight to zero. Okay, on to Bill Number 17-26. I need a motion and a second for the second reading.
Motion. Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero with one abstention. Mrs. Duran. Ms. Brandon.
In ordinance of the city council of the City of Republic, Missouri, approving the final plat of the Monte Cristo Phase 2 subdivision located in the City of Republic, Missouri.
Need a motion and a second for final passage of Bill Number 17-26?
Motion. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Mr. Tyson?
Thank you. If approved, this ordinance will authorize the recording and approval of the final plat of the Monte Cristo Phase 2 subdivision, which contains 29 single-family residential lots, all located within the high-density, single-family zoning district that we generally refer to as R1H. The minimum lot size in that zoning district is 7,000 square feet. The smallest lot in the subdivision is 7,000 square feet, but the average lot size is in excess of 9,000 square feet. If approved and recorded, this final plat will allow the sale of these lots, as well as the issuance of building permits. The final plat also contains and dedicates all of the necessary right-of-way and easements to contain and allow for maintenance of the public infrastructure that serves all of these 29 lots.
Okay. Do we have any questions? Discussion for Mr. Tyson? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Duran?
Aye.
Oh, I've...
She abstained.
Oh, sorry. Councilmember Mendez?
Aye.
Councilmember Deitman?
Aye.
Councilmember Brishers?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Self?
Aye.
Motion carries seven, zero, one. One abstention, Mrs. Duran.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Before you leave, I just want to express our appreciation for doing the work and doing this project in the community. So it's good to see this development moving forward, so thank you.
Me on to Resolution Number 17-R-56. A resolution of the city council, the City of Republic, Missouri, authorizing the execution of a contract addendum with Olson Associates for project administration at the Garten Business Park. Need a motion and a second?
Motion. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Mr. Brock?
Thank you, Mayor. We've got a couple items on the agenda tonight relating to the Garten Business Park. The first one here is to approve outside help with some of the administrative tasks. Our street superintendent position has been vacant for a couple months. We're in the middle of a job search for it, and we've got the skills and resources to do the operations and the manpower work, but we're missing that administrative piece that our street superintendent would normally fill. So we were proposing to hire contract help through Olson. There was discussion last week, and the question as we left it was whether this would be reimbursable back through our agreement with Rury University. I did correspond with our counterpart with Rury University, and they indicated that they saw no problem with this being included as our reimbursable expense.
Any questions, comments, or discussion for Mr. Brock?
Thanks for following up on that. Appreciate that.
Nothing? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero. Thank you, Mr. Brock. On to new business. Need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill Number 17-27.
Motion. Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero. Ms. Brandon?
In ordinance of the city council of the City of Republic, Missouri, amending the budget for fiscal year 2017.
Thank you. Ms. Parks?
Thank you, Council. In June, I brought forward an amendment to our 2016 budget, and at that time, I brought up the fact that I'd be bringing a 2017 budget amendment, and so here it is. Chapter 67 of the state statute states that cities need to have a balanced budget, and during the year, if they have expenditures that are going to go over the budget, they need to do an amendment. The reason for this is to make sure that cities are not spending funds above their means, and so it's important for us to practice this, and it was brought up in our audit report as well. So a lot of the items that are on our list for the budget amendment are items that have been approved by you through different council ordinances throughout the year. They just were not added to the budget at that time. So attached is a revised budget summary. State statute requires that we amend the total overall fund and the difference between the budgeted amount and the final increased amount. So you'll see in the ordinance language that shows the difference between the budgeted and then the revised. However, I went ahead and attached to this as an exhibit, the line-by-line items, so you could see where I was getting my numbers to increase and decrease the overall budget. In addition, there is a new revised budget summary, and I'll show you which sheet I'm talking about. This sheet, which is the cover sheet to the budget, that was approved last year by you for fiscal year 2017. I also put some notations at the bottom, because it was a little confusing where it might show a net income or loss from the revenues and expenditures. I wanted to show we were still balanced, because those funds were actually coming from our reserve balances. So you'll see little notations that weren't there before on this overall sheet. With that being said, I will just highlight a few of the key items in the exhibit, and then entertain any questions you might have on any items. As you are aware, we do a transfer from our utility to cover the expenses of our utility department, and so we have adjusted the transfer at the same time as adding the expenses. So underneath the revenue transfer, that's what the water UB transfer is. For salaries, the administration fund, we've had an increase, we're projecting of $25,000 in that line item. I want to highlight something very important in the salary line item. In the audit process, it was brought to our attention, we didn't have enough separation of duties. In the budget process, that's where we normally have full-time and part-time employees approved. So I have requested, and I have given a spreadsheet to the city administrator to demonstrate that we could increase our part-time accounts payable position to a full-time to better serve the needs of the city, and then at that time, restructure it so that we have that separation of duties that was lacking in the audit. This increase is asking for an additional 12 hours a week. The employee was already a little bit over, you know, the 20 hours a week position. Due to the transition in our department, it actually will not increase the overall salary line item for my department, but we're including it in the budget, because that's where you guys normally approve how many full-time employees and part-time employees the city has. We are going to be over budget because of vacation payouts that we had this year due to key players leaving the city. So the next item is, as you know, you approved Larry Brown to come and assist the city, so that overage I have adjusted. And then in the administration, another large item was the TSI contract when we made that transition. It's over budget a little bit due to some initial needs and extra work they had, and I'm sure administration can answer any questions you might have about that. And you guys are aware, we've had a lot of legal items that we're working on, so we're adjusting the budget for that as well by $16,000. There's a lot of little line items. I'm not going to touch on all of them, but we are asking for a truck, which will be discussed in one of the resolutions, and so that money, if it should be approved, is included in this budget amendment as well. And then on the second page, there's a lot of items for the special projects related to the Garten Business Park. As you're aware, when council approved the ordinance authorizing the city to work in conjunction with Drury, they approved us to go ahead and start working on it, and Drury will reimburse us at the end, but I need to go ahead and include those expenditures so that we're compliant, because it will show in our books. So those are broken down between different funds, so you'll see a lot of different line items for the Garten Business Park. And then one item that we were very pleased to purchase this year, which council, we were very grateful council to allow us to purchase, was the aerial fire truck. And so that has been purchased, and I believe you saw it at the last council meeting, but we haven't added it to the official budget. So we did that. The first lease payment will be in December of this year, and then we also paid the down payment of $292,000. And one last item, which had not been budgeted, was my UB, the finance department has the UB department underneath it, which is utility billing, the supervisor position. We added that salary, which you'll see as a line item being transferred from the water department. So with that all said, if anyone has any questions on how the budget amendment works or particular line items, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions? Discussion? Seeing none, remember this is the first read, so if you have any questions, please get with Mrs. Parks in the meeting. Thank you. Need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill Number 17-28?
Motion. Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero. Ms. Brandon?
In ordinance of the city council of the City of Republic, Missouri, repealing ordinances 96-1683, 98-27, 05-77, 09-42, 12-58, and all amendments thereto, repealing Municipal Code Section 110.020, and enacting a new Article 2 purchasing policy in Chapter 110, Administration Policies of the Republic Municipal Code.
Thank you. Mr. Cameron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I'm asking for tonight, or asking at least from the next two readings, is to revitalize a policy that goes all the way back to 1996. Staff will tell you when I first arrived, this is probably one of the first documents I wanted to get my hands on, because it's somewhat very restrictive. It's very difficult to do business with the policy that's currently in place. And so, you know, and so I'm asking for your leadership and your direction, and at least just support for changing and putting a little bit more discretion in our hands, but it's still more reporting back to the city council for how we make purchases in the city. It aligns with our mission to be aggressively progressive. So I know that this is very progressive from what the old policy was, which basically says anything over $5,000 comes to this city council for approval. And so this new policy changes that quite a bit, where once you approve the budget, it's already in a budgeted approved item. The capital improvement committee's already approved the item, so we're bringing it back for approval again. And so what I'm asking for is to change that policy that would allow that if it's over the sealed bid process or amount of $25,000, that that would be the things that would come for you for ratification. Or if it's a change order to a project over 15% or over $15,000, that she would come before you and you would see those things. You're not seeing those now. So if a project was over $1 million and the change order's only 15% or $150,000, you wouldn't even see that change order, because it does not exceed a certain amount. This allows, if it's over $15,000, you'd be aware of it. And so some of the changes that are in there that would be, and one of the things that was brought up in the audit was that we would change our capital threshold from $1,000 to $5,000. So we no longer capitalize an asset at $1,000, we're capitalizing it at $5,000. It'll make it easier for our auditing, and it was brought up in the auditing. But currently, right now, the sealed bid requirement, so when staff needs to go out and buy chairs for the aquatic center, they have to do a sealed bid. And that sealed bid process, from beginning to writing it to the time it's approved, could take somewhere between 30 to 45 days. And this new process, it could take as little as three days to get three written quotes. It has to be signed off on. It's already been budgeted for. It's approved, it's signed, it would pass the audit test, it would pass the purchasing and procurement policy. What it would do, though, is it would eliminate a lot of different things that staff are doing. And so I brought an exhibit, just to, so what you see, I'm sorry, those that are not sitting there. But the current policy has staff filling out a PO number for every single detail they buy. So for this situation, it's a mini bulb for $3.59. So they fill out this purchase order, then they fill out the bottoms, the next sheet requires filling out all this additional information for a light bulb, and then it has to go before, they fill all that out. And that's for every purchase. The new policy would allow for them to call O'Reilly's in this situation, make the purchase with a purchasing card, assign a general line item number to it, and sign their name. And so you read the administrative policy that's there for you that would allow, it would take away a lot of time. Like we say, we just, the auditor brought up the accounts payable, we brought up a full-time position to a deal. This would eliminate a lot of redundant work or additional work. We saw the stack of papers that are just for $3.49, where that should be just something on a purchasing card. We get one statement, we sign it, that person has to sign it, it was received. And the policy kind of just speaks for how we're going to hold the staff accountable. There's an ethics provision written into the administrative policy, but we talk about to be aggressively progressive through processes, relationships, and trust. I think this is an aggressive process improvement that will help expedite the way we get business done. And I think the way it was drafted from 1996 to the present, I think that this is very appropriate for getting work done. It still has you receiving in the admin report, as I mentioned to you, when you get the admin report, there's a lot of information. It's not just sitting there saying, hey, this is your tall grass complaint. Like in the last report, I provided you the whole expenditure to the Shulker Creek Cliff Station, how we arrived at $80,000. And so I'm hoping you're finding those useful. There's a lot of reporting requirements in this new document that you're still aware of the purchase, but your ultimate control is what you just did in the budget amendment. You'll see it. The budget is what holds us accountable. So when you're approving the budget, that's where the measure of accountability comes in, that and capital improvement committee. So I'm asking your consideration to take a big jump in changing this and moving this in a much more progressive approach, that will allow more flexibility, but there is more accountability included. But I think this would improve the processes for the staff. I think if you were to ask the staff, they would say this makes it much more user-friendly for them as well. So I'm asking your consideration and recommending your approval. And I'll entertain any questions.
Any questions at all? Yes, sir. Mr. Johnson?
And this may be a question that's unanswerable by just about anybody here, but what conditions existed in 96 that kind of caused such a restrictive policy to be enacted? I just wonder what was taking place to, when somebody didn't just come up with this and put it into play, something was going on.
It, the, it's kind of evolved. A lot of times what you have is, a lot of times what's just typical, I hate to say this, but when you have one government for one area that perhaps does something in error, the other cities may respond. I can't speak for what Republic did, but most likely, it's kind of like, I hate to say this, but I'm going to say it, with the situation in Ferguson, I think we created a whole lot of laws that affected us that wasn't a result of anything that we were doing ourselves, but created rules that made it much more difficult to do our role. And I think that's what happens with finance, too, is once a city gets caught doing something wrong, so everybody overreacts and drafts a new policy to do, to keep it that way. Where $5,000, we want everything approved at the council level. So if you're buying a radio for the police department, they're $7,500. We want to know about every one of those. So I'm not really sure what would dictate that, but I've seen a lot of times people create policy because they saw someone else get burned through a state audit. And that's why you have good auditing, and you have people come through and look at those things and evaluate your spending and purchasing, so you avoid those habits. But I will tell you this, our new auditors have reviewed this policy. We sent it to them for their review and comment, and we received a positive feedback. But you're right, there is no answer to that question, I can only speculate. But a lot of times, clamping down policy means someone else got cost, so we got to, everybody else gets to pay the price for it.
Again, $20,000, you know, $20,000, $5,000 20 years ago is a different amount compared to today's dollars.
Yeah. So.
I mean, I like this a lot. This is something that, as far as efficiency, and it's all about the end user and the end product, and so if our departments can be more efficient in getting to a final product, whether it's the chairs at the pool, or, you know, something for Public Works, or whatever it may be, you know, I'm all for this, as far as, as long as that's the safety net, the auditing is our safety net, so you already beat me to that, so, but it sounds like it's a good idea.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
One other item that I want to draw your attention to in the administrative policy. Number five on the, in the admin policy, it talks about a parcel of split purchase. I have a zero tolerance on splitting invoices to do that. At the last meeting, as you recall, as I told you, it's very difficult to bring this policy, knowing that we got to confront the situation from the last meeting. It is a zero tolerance policy, and one of the things, we had a supervisor meeting, which we do every other month, and one of the things we discussed yesterday was fraud, but that specific situation was brought up. And so this policy takes away people's spending rights, or even their ability, it may very well cost them their job if they're caught in the act of doing such things. But there is an ethics provision also provided in this policy as well to help add a little bit more, you know, clarity to it. We're not believing that that's going on, but we also, we need to, we've got to do our part to communicate it on a routine basis. Thank you.
Anything else from council? Okay, remember, this is the first read, so if you have any questions, please get with Mr. Cameron. On to other business. Resolution Number 17-R-60, a resolution of the city council of the City of Republic, Missouri, authorizing membership in the Tri-State Water Resource Coalition and payment of annual membership dues. Need a motion and a second?
Motion. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Mr. Davis?
Hello, everybody. We seek membership into the Tri-State Water Resource Coalition, which is a nonprofit coalition comprised of municipalities, counties, and both public and private utilities. Their mission is to acquire an adequate and affordable and long-term water supply for the southwest Missouri. Present efforts right now involve just analysis and the processes needed to reallocate stored water from the local lakes, Table Rock, Stockton, Pond de Terre. Membership into the coalition requires an annual due. There is no applications or forms or agreements. Membership will be maintained each year by submitting payment. Dues are based upon number of connections with our primacy fees through DNR. There'll be half of what the primacy fee is. Annual dues for Republic are currently calculated at $8,124, which... Annual dues for Republic are currently calculated at $8,124, which we prorated this year to $4,062. We seek approval.
Counsel. Any questions from council from Mr. Davis? Mr. Johnson?
This would appear to not be a budgeted item.
No, that's correct.
Okay. So this is a good example of $4,000 unbudgeted. Where does that come from elsewhere in budget? We're spending $4,000 here, where are we not spending $4,000?
Good question. You don't, I mean, I don't know what line item it's set to, to come out of.
I could press that.
Mr. Brock.
One of the maintenance issues that we are working on or trying to work on is payment of water tanks. And we've been unable to get that to the rest of the park. We're to the point where we can bid that out, we can't let it run. Painting season ends about September and we just don't have the rest far enough to catch the contractors in their period when they can bid that. So that was 90 some odd thousand dollars. We will spend some, some of that funds with consultant specifications, but that'll be a line item, that would be more than offset.
And the 8,100 will be in the 2018 budget?
It will.
I suspect it will be in a future budget amendment.
Mr. Wilson.
What exactly do we get for that money?
Right now, they're, like I said, they're just in the, the process and analysis phase of water rate, or water studies. Eventually, as we just.
Eventually they would, they would be kind of the organization, organization that constructs a shared resource. That could be a, a new compoundment, that could be a, a pipeline from existing reservoir that delivers raw water, could be a, a drinking water finishing plant. That would be a, you know, that's their long-term goal is to share drinking water and to form the, I can't remember the acronym for it, but it's just a, this organization would mortgage it, something that's allowed in the state that allows water districts to band together and caution on such a project. Our present dues really go towards getting it on the ground for having input in the studies that are made. And if they start to make decisions, they're able to secure actual storage in one of the area lakes. It makes sense that, that we could be in a position to benefit from that because we're, we're nearby. But try to be direct is to keep the, the coalition operating and the full-time director asked to pay for the ongoing analysis and bureaucratic, I guess, operations through or, or the core of engineers to try and allocate, get a reallocation of these lakes.
Any other questions? Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wilson, what, I will, I will say this, this is being driven by myself. I mean, I mean, I've asked them to bring this before you. You can only, you can only put so many sticks in the ground and draw water from them. So there's enough towers and everybody's going to be lobbying for how many times you can poke a hole in the ground and take, take water. So they're looking for a resource as a coalition through area lakes, through core lakes, to get an allocation. And we're going to need a portion of that allocation long-term for the growth and stability of the city where you cannot rely upon a water tower to get that done. So there'll have to be some other measure by which we get our water long-term. Not, this is not five years down the road, this is not 10, this is probably more like 15. I am going to serve on this board if approved to help participate in some of the assistance with a background in it. Naturally, you want to help lobby for your community to make sure, just like we do with OTO and highway dollars, I would view that as the same type of coalition as we would OTO. If you don't have a seat at the table, there's no funding, and if you, all of a sudden you have a shortage of water, and Nixa, Ozark, and Springfield have that allocation, and you come in late, you're going to pay a premium for it. We've kind of been reluctant to the table. I want us to be there and have an active, active voice. And so I think we get not only a participation, but I think we're a seat and an active voice to help drive the changes that they're wanting to make. We're better in numbers than we are individual quads away. So I think this is part of our regional focus as well. But we will have a seat on that board and it will be, and I will be attending those meetings to help participate to get a, to get a, an allocation of water from whatever lake that might be, being discussed where they're drawing it from.
So in other words, it'd be something like the city of Springfield did in piping water from the lake.
It's exactly what the city of Springfield did. In fact, there is, there's draft routes, there's areas that they've looked at of how to draw another allocation. There's enough water, say in Stockton, and there's different routes where you could run those main transmission lines or where you could get water distribution. Because you can only poke, like I said, you can only hit the Ruby Dew or, or the, the aquifer so many times before eventually you're all tapping into the same well and you're drawing it so fast that they're telling everybody, you'll end up like San Antonio or something to that effect where you got watering restrictions, you better be looking for the long-term use of where you're going to get your water from. And so that's exactly what it would be. And there is a coalition working and that coalition has, does have connections and cooperation with the core, working on an allocation from both, they're looking at Stockton and Table Rock and also at potentially a lake in Oklahoma.
Well, it's a good idea, we're on there, but I just wanted to know.
Yeah. And on Jason's behalf, I, I, they're up there, I want them to present, I think you'll see that I want our staff to be presenting their agenda items, but also want to know what's helped driving where that's at. And that's not a question he can answer. So I appreciate the, job well done, but I need to explain that a little bit where it's, I, I was looking at it just like OTO, but that's the issue. I don't need more water towers, we're going to be able to build before we're going to need more.
Any other discussion? Thank you, Jason. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries eight to zero. Resolution number 17-R-6-1, a resolution of the city council of the city of Republic, Missouri, awarding bids for precast concrete structures. Need a motion in a second?
Motion, second.
Have a motion in a second. Mr. Brock.
Thank you, sir. This is the other item on the agenda related to the Garden Business Park. We conducted a sealed bid process to purchase components of a buried storm sewer. These are all precast concrete structures. We solicited three manufacturers, we received two responses. Our two bidders were Stewart Concrete Products out of Web City and Skirlock Industries out of Springfield. Little bidder was Skirlock Industries out of Springfield. You can see the detailed bid there, their, the bid award for Skirlock then. We've got pipe and pipe fittings at $10,078, $10,078 and 10 cents. And then concrete structures, curbament box and junction box at a total price of $10,006.13. So staff is requesting award to, for both sections of the bid to Skirlock Industries.
Yes, sir. Any questions or discussion? Mr. Brock? I assume this is part of what jury's reimbursing as far as we talked about earlier, so.
Yes, sir.
Saying nothing, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries eight to zero. Resolution number 17-R-6-2, a resolution of the city council of the city of Republic, Missouri, authorizing the purchase of a work truck for utility meter reading. I need a motion in a second?
Motion, second.
Have a motion in a second. Mr. Walker? Sorry, Ms. Parks, would you like to introduce him?
Oh, I'm sorry. I just wanted to introduce to council our new utility bill supervisor. You'll see him on any given day out, help assisting the meter techs out on the field or at the front counter assisting whenever there's a shortage at the front. And he's also cost to me to learn the building, um, actual information.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Mr. Walker?
Good evening. I'm here to request the authorization to purchase a work truck for the utility meter reading. The actual authorization is requested because the state contract calls for four-by-four super cab short bed. We're requesting to get a four-by-two regular cab long bed. So we're asking for your permission as well to purchase the truck, but to have an amendment to the, the state contract.
Any questions, comments, or discussion? Mr. Walker? Or Ms. Parks?
Is this a budgeted item? Is this a budgeted?
This was budgeted originally, but due to an oversight, it was not actually pursued. So this would actually be an amendment to the budget.
It was entered in that budget amendment that we just approved.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Dyken?
Is this replacing the vehicle or?
This is going to replace one of the 2005 Ford Rangers that's requiring some maintenance. We took it in after getting the quote, looking at the actual resale of the truck, we wouldn't actually be making much on the resale of that truck after doing the repairs.
Mr. Cameron.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. This was in our budget discussion, we actually had the budget discussion in our, our meetings. We had discussed this truck being in, included in the budget. That's why I'm grateful that we're doing the budget amendments because what gets missed and what gets approved, even though we discussed it and we believe the council understood we were buying one, because it's not listed in there, we have to bring it back. But it was one of those things, items that was needed to be replaced. And in the transition of finance and different things, it just never took place. And so I just want to be clear, this was something that we'd already had in the capital improvements committee, I believe in that original discussion, was these vehicles were very, were at their end of their useful life. So just, again, I'm thankful for the budget amendments so we can at least bring up things that we, that got missed in the budget, that we're taking care of and the fiscal year that we need to deal with. So just to clarify, thank you.
Anything else from council? Saying nothing, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries eight to zero. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Resolution number 17-R-6-3, a resolution of the city council of the city of Republic, Missouri, authorizing the city administrator to enter, to enter an agreement allowing the Green County Sheriff to use the jail, city jail facility located at 540 Civic Boulevard as a temporary inmate booking facility. Motion in a second?
Motion, second.
Have a motion in a second. Chief Watt?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We're before you, or I'm here tonight before you on a proposed agreement with the Green County Sheriff's Department for them to utilize our existing, underutilized facility at the Republic Police Department. If I can give you a quick history so you understand how this all came about, about, it's actually June 22nd, so it was less than a month ago. I became aware through communication in the law enforcement region that the Sheriff's Department was going to be constructing a, a temporary, or actually, I think it's a permanent building, but it's a fast building in their jail to increase their capability to handle prisoners. As part of that construction, or at least what I believe to be as part of that construction, there was discussion that they would be closing their booking area at the jail during the construction phase to utilize that booking area as a housing unit for prisoners, full-time prisoners in the jail. And the alternative that was expressed to me at that time was that the only viable solution for a booking area in the region was at Henry County Jail in, well, Henry County in Clinton, Missouri, which is over 100 miles away from here. What that effectively meant to me as an administrator for law enforcement was that to book state-charged prisoners, I'm not talking about municipal prisoners now, I'm talking about state-charged prisoners. At the Green County Jail, agencies would be transporting these prisoners an hour and 40 minutes north, booking them and driving back an hour and 40 minutes. I'll be real honest with you, that was not a, a reasonable solution to me. I recognize that we had a facility that could potentially assist in this situation as a temporary booking facility. So I approached the sheriff, it was unsolicited, I approached the sheriff to see if our facility could be some way utilized as a regional solution with this issue. The sheriffs looked at it, sheriff's staff looked at it, originally thought it might be too small for the volume of bookings that occur countywide, Green County wide. However, after a little bit more discussion and additional staff looking at it, was determined that it could be used with some additional staff on the part of the Green County Sheriff's to transport people out on a, on a quicker basis so they wouldn't be in our facility as long. And they believed they could do it. So that started literally June 22nd, so we're here on, today, less than a month away. And we are proposing in this agreement, working with the city attorney, that the Green County Sheriff's Office utilized the space through this agreement. They run the operation. They staff the people, they bring in the equipment, all the things that they need to do. They conduct any additional work that needs to be done in the facility to get it up to speed to operate. That includes an unfinished room in the facility, about a 220 square foot room that's completely unfinished, was never completed back in 2002 when it was built, to get it up to speed to be utilized as a, as a booking facility only. I have tonight Major Kevin Spalding with the Sheriff's Department, I'll call up in a second, but he and I have discussed this at length over the last couple of weeks and hashed back and forth many agreements or modifications with the city attorney and the, and the council for the Sheriff's Department. The concern here, or the importance of this issue is, it was brought, is because the belief was that Republic was the only solution regionally that could facilitate this. No other municipality in this region has a facility to even approach this issue. And so that's why we brought it to the table as a regional solution, a temporary regional As I indicated to you previously, we've done some research with facilities, both city facilities and county facilities people. Looks like we have about $1,000 of work to finish off that room and a couple of days of labor for a couple of people to make that functional. There was some additional information brought to me this morning on behalf of the fire department, of some additional requirements under our existing code for fire sprinklers and smoke alarms that I haven't discussed with the Sheriff's Department because I became aware of it this morning, that we will add to that as part of this requirement to get this up to staff. We want this, or up to snuff, we want this to be operational and consistent with all ordinances and codes if it's going to operate. Obviously, I, I, I've heard in the last week or two, some concerns from the public about the concern about bringing prisoners countywide to the city of Republic facility. Some of those prisoners may be released once they're booked, some will stay in the system and be transported to either the county jail here in Green County or to another facility that the sheriff arranges. So not all people that are here will be released here. Some will be taken into the county system and not released. But I've understood the concern from the part of the public that, that, you know, public city, the Republic Police Department may become a, a loitering location for our local criminals in the county, or at least a drop-off location. We worked excessively, or, over this period of time, the last two and a half weeks, we've worked with the city, or the county council and our city council to come up with some agreements. The language you see in the agreement related to the release portion was not the original agreement language, it was actually the second language. And the reason it, the original language was that, you know, the sheriff will require all transported prisoners that come to this jail to transport them back to where they came from. And I suggested to our city attorney and the county council that I thought that was not a operationally functional thing to do for law enforcement in this county. Those bookings, for example, a small agency could bring a agent, or a prisoner to our booking facility for a DWI arrest on state charges, drop them off, fill out the paperwork, leave. Three, four hours later, that person may be released back into, ready to be released after the booking process and sobering up. And some of the smaller agencies in this county may not be able to come back to Republic or wherever that facility was to pick that prisoner up, to take them back to wherever, either their house in the county or their city or wherever they would reside. I thought it was too restrictive, so I suggested to loosen that up, that we would do everything in our power and the Sheriff's Department would do everything in their power to encourage agencies to provide transportation and encourage prisoners who were released to solicit transportation out of Republic so we wouldn't have a congregation of people at our front step. As we became aware, got closer to this council meeting, there were some concerns on the part of the public that we became aware of. We worked hard to try and resolve that, that we may be a dropping off point for prisoners and that may- we may be a dropping off point for prisoners and that may create some safety issues in the community. Listening to that concern, we went back and attempted to work with the sheriff, literally in the last couple of days, to modify some of the language to be more directive in terms of the sheriff's responsibility to either have others or themselves handle those prisoners. And we were unsuccessful in working out an agreement that I could bring for you. So what you have in front of you is what I'll call the original language in terms of the prisoner release portion of this. So you understand from a perspective of the Republic Police Department, we did some research with the help of the Sheriff's Office, over the last six months, we booked 175 prisoners on state charges into the county jail. That amounts to about a prisoner a day on average for us that would go to county jail on state charges. Some days there may be five, some days there may be none, but overall, over the period of six months, it was 175. A review of those 175 for us, I did a review of those records, about 90 of those, or 51% of those, were released from county jail within four hours. So those were likely, and I don't want to hold me to the facts because I didn't go through with their charges and look at everything, but those were likely book and release charges. They were booked into county jail on state charges and because of no space for some misdemeanor arrests, they were released, which is the process, the standard process that's used in the county. So about 50% of our arrests are booked and released within four hours of being dropped off there at the facility. I don't want to say that our statistics mirror every other agency's statistics in the county. I can get my statistics and I've asked Major Spalding if they're available to be able to answer any questions countywide, but I'm trying to give you the perspective of the number of prisoners, for example, in the Republic situation that may be released on a daily basis, half a prisoner a day if you want to look at it from that perspective. If we're bringing one up, and 50% of ours are released within four hours, it'd be half a day. Obviously, we have a lot of other agencies, Springfield, one of the largest agencies in terms of dropping, booking prisoners at the jail, the Green County Sheriff's Department, the Missouri State Highway Patrol, those are the three larger agencies. After that comes Republic in terms of sheer numbers of booking on state charges in the county. I hope Major Spalding will have, when I introduce him here, he'll have some statistics in terms of the bigger picture, so looking at all of us, but I'm trying to give you our perspective here. Looking at this transportation issue, the alternative, which was the transportation to Henry County, it's a 103 mile trip, it's about an hour and 40 minutes each way, and you figure 20 to 40 minutes of booking time there, it's a four-hour trip for personnel. So if we sent an officer to transport a DWI arrest and we were going to book them on state charges, we'd send them up there and four hours later, they'd be back, in theory. Gives you a perspective of the time invested, and that's why it was so important to offer this as a regional solution to reduce that time, or potentially reduce that time. I think at this point, because I don't want to go on too much, I'm happy to answer any questions as we go, but I want to make sure that we answer the questions that you want answered, not the ones that I think you're going to ask me. I want to, I do want to introduce Major Spalding, Major Kevin Spalding with the Sheriff's Department. He is in charge of the jail operations for the sheriffs. He is, he and his staff are the ones who came over and inspected our facility and made the determination that it could be used. I do want to say a couple of things. One, when we talk about a regional solution to this problem, the city of Springfield, recognizing they have a large, larger issue than the city of Republic in this transportation issue, has committed an officer 24/7 during this construction process, which is supposed to take two to three months, to work in the booking facility to assist the two booking people from the Green County Sheriff's Department, so there'd be three people in the booking area 24/7, you know, during this period, to ensure that we have enough staff to handle the booking and get people booked quickly and ready to be transported out, either to another county jail, to the Green County Jail, or released and released back to an agency. So there's a regional investment in the sense of the three larger agencies in the county to work together to try and solve this. Some are contributing space, would contribute space as in Republic, some would contribute personnel as in Springfield. Gives you a perspective. The smaller agencies, although I've invited them all here tonight, the chiefs from all the smaller agencies in the county, they have less resources, significantly less resources to be able to offer as a regional solution. I'm sure there's a million things, I don't want to take forever tonight, but I'm sure there's a million things that I've skipped over. I do have some cost breakdown of another alternative solution, if this isn't acceptable to the council, in relation to potentially contracting with a private vendor to provide transports, either individually as an agency or as a regional group. And I have some rough costs connected with that, they're significant when you're paying a contractor to be available 24/7 to transport prisoners. So that's why I also believe that this solution was a viable solution. The concern with the security, I've talked with Springfield Police Department related to their municipal arrest program and the issues they've had in some communities in the area and the region related to release of those municipal prisoners. The chief of Springfield indicated to me that despite the concerns, they have yet to have any issues specifically connected, a crime being committed by a municipal prisoner. We're talking different level here, but by a municipal prisoner in any of the jurisdictions where they transport their municipal prisoners. Other than that, I don't know that I can provide you anything other than anecdotal information, I don't know that there's any statistical information to bring forward on that kind of situation. So, I'm going to introduce Kevin, Major Kevin Spalding, he may be able to provide you just some base background from their side, provide you where we were at, and then I will wrap it up with some additional information.
Chief, after this part of the presentation, we do have a citizen who would like to speak as well, so I think before we have questions from council, we would like to have the citizen speak, that because we may be able to answer all, try to get to all the questions at once.
Most definitely. Yeah, I didn't realize there was some.
Absolutely. Major Spalding?
Yes. First of all, I'd like to thank you, thank you for the invitation to come and speak with you tonight. Sheriff Arnaud sends his apologies, he's in a training session, a mandatory training session this week, so he's not available tonight. I'd like to reiterate just a couple of things that the chief talked about. Those people that aren't really familiar with the jail operations, and we talk about bookings, and we throw these terms around that you may or may not understand fully. So I wanted to kind of insert a different word beside booking. And basically, a booking is just a process that we go through to fingerprint and photograph and put a person into our computer system. So it's just a process, and I want to make that clear, that this is in no way designed to be any kind of a holding facility, a jail, anything along those lines, it's just simply a place for us to bring someone and process them through the system. Our initial plan calls for, in addition to the three officers that the chief was talking about, a two officer team of transport officers and two vans, transport vans. Those vans will be running at a minimum of four to six hours, if we need more than that, they'll be going more than that. So we have, we have the resources to turn these things over quickly. Unfortunately, over the past three or four years, we've had some experience with this type of issue. We currently house inmates, state inmates, in six other counties within 120 miles of our facility. So our guys are constantly on the road, moving those people around, bringing them back for court, arraignment, those kinds of things. And I think that you're free to contact, if you have questions or concerns, any of those counties, because in those agreements, we specifically state that those people will not be left in those communities. So that's our, that's our desire, that's, that'll be what we strive to do, is to make sure that those people are not left here causing issues and causing problems for the community. I live here, my kids go to school here, so that's the last thing I want, obviously, is to, is to bring a problem to this community or any other community. But that's kind of all I had to say, if you have some questions, we'd be glad to. The chief asked maybe for some more bigger standards or statistics. I would say a vast majority of the people that would be brought here will be brought here on warrant arrests. They will be bonding either from here, or if they can't bond, then they will be transported back to Green County for processing, additional processing. They'll get some clothes and they'll get another assignment and sent to one of those other counties. That's probably going to be the vast majority of the arrests. There will be some of those DWI four-hour, five-hour domestic holds, those kinds of things. I'm going to have a team here, a staff of guys that know what they're doing, and that's going to be one of their top priorities, is to make sure as soon as that person gets here, that we figure out a transportation solution, so.
Before we go on with questions, thank you, Major Spalding, I'd like to invite Mr. Ron Hutchison to the podium.
Ron Hutchison, I live here in Republic, have for 20-some years, and appreciate the opportunity to speak about it. I too have kids here, grandkids, and safety is probably one of my biggest concerns about it. The problem with the jail is huge, I mean, it's, it's not just a problem, I think it's a crisis where we're at with Major Spalding and everybody else that's a player in this thing, and it's not just, in my opinion, the temporary thing, but we've got to come up with a permanent solution. And I have a background in law enforcement, I've spent 22 years with the Springfield Police Department, retired with an Agent Service Pension, spent, worked as a Marionville Police Chief, and also worked for Green County in the pre-trial services. So I have some familiarity with the situation of booking prisoners and releasing them, and I just don't really see that as a good solution for the city of Republic to do this. There's got to be a solution somewhere, I wish I could offer that, but I think the, if we could find someplace in Springfield maybe where there's mass transit, closer to where they're used to being released, but I fear the problem that we're going to have here is there's going to be persons released in between the four- to six-hour window that the transportation is going to arrive, and, or they refuse transportation. And I'm not so sure, Major Spalding can probably answer this, I'm not sure that we can force these released prisoners to take a ride unless they want to. I'm not sure how that works, but anyway, I appreciate that Republic, we're trying to be a part of the solution. I mean, this is our problem, this isn't just Republic, I mean, we're all the Green County citizens, and this is a big problem. And I just disagree, and I'd share my opinion, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. I'd open up the questions, discussion from council.
I have a letter too, did you want to bring that up?
We do have a letter from Calvary Baptist Church, I wonder if it has it. Well, everyone has seen that, is that correct?
Mayor, if I could add just one thing, I realized in the discussion I didn't cover it. So in discussions with the Sheriff's Department, I asked questions like, what's your average booking, number of bookings per day in the facility, so we get a picture of the volume That's a big fluctuation, 25 to 50, they've had as much as 100 a day in their busiest days that are brought for booking. I don't mean all of them stay and all of them released, I'm just giving you the overall perspective. He probably can give you more details, but just gives you a rough idea of the number of people that would be brought here, at least initially to be processed, and then determination which ones stay and which ones go and which ones get released and how long they're here, so that gives you a rough idea. You know, I averaged 50 a day based off of those numbers, it could be a little higher than that, but if we did 50 a day, it would require a lot of transportation costs on the part of the sheriff to get them out of here before four hours or six hours. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Mr. Aaron.
So the arresting, the arresting officer wouldn't have to transport after processing, is that correct?
Well, you know, this is a-
Like if they were to go to Green County, or?
Yeah, your question's an excellent question. I'm going to be real honest with you when I say that that's not real clear. Some agencies, some of the smaller agencies may transport somebody here and then two hours later, they're ready to be released on a book and release, and that agency may not have an officer on duty. Some agencies might, and, but they may not be available because of cost for service. So it's a complicated question, I can't give you a definitive answer one way or another. The intent of the language in the agreement that you're looking at right now was to do everything within our collective law enforcement power, so the sheriff, the arresting agency, to get those prisoners the resources and the opportunity to get them transported back to wherever they went. And one of the complications is, I think it's, it seems like a simple process, but realize that not all people who are arrested are arrested in the community they live. Somebody could be arrested for DWI in Willard and live in Stratford. And so when they're released, what, do you transport them back to Willard? See, there's little complications with how it works, it's not as simple as rested here, take back here. Do you want to drop off a prisoner, take a prisoner back, for example, to County Road X and County Road X in the middle of nowhere, because that's where they were arrested? Probably not. So it's a complicated issue. The intent was to do everything within our power, to work to find transportation solutions away from Republic once they were processed. That was the intent. Hope that answers your question.
Mr. Mendez.
Yeah, so the biggest things that I've heard from citizens and from the community is the releasing portion of it. Is it a true statement what Mr. Hutchison said about, is it involuntary for the person once released to take that ride? I mean, we can't mandate that they go back to the Green County Jail for release from that location, can we?
I had a specific conversation with Major Spalding about this issue because of the press that's been out in the Springfield issue connected with the municipal warrants and the comments by Springfield that once they dropped them off at a jail facility for municipal charges, they couldn't transport them back because it would be voluntary and if the person didn't want a ride, they couldn't get it. The county jail has a little different look at that position. Their position is they're not released until they're released. So the idea, and I think he mentioned it a little bit, and is one of the transportations to a county, when they transport them to another county, if the county transported them back to the county jail, to the city, to a location somewhere, when they're handed their paperwork and their belongings and let out of the van, for example, or wherever they're transported, that would be the release. I think what you're getting hung up on is some believing a little bit that the property and the paperwork would be released here, then there, we don't have any control over them. The sheriff and the major assured me that their process is different. When you're released from county jail, Green County Jail, or their control, it doesn't happen until the deputy says you are released. If that's not at the front door, if that's at a jail or somewhere else, that's where the release occurs. Does that answer your question?
Can I add to that just a little bit?
Sure.
One of the things I think probably that everybody's heard and read about the difficulties that the Springfield Police Department is having, they're dealing with a total different demographics. The people that they're arresting on municipal ordinances, first, are not criminal charges, they're an ordinance violation, and so they have to be treated a little differently. Second of all, the demographics of those people, there's a lot of homeless people, there's a lot of mentally ill people, there's a lot of people that are homeless. So those are the kind of people that they're dealing with on those kinds of charges that we won't be dealing with here. Now, I'm not, I'm not saying that they, someone don't have problems, but in most cases, the people that we deal with on those state charges are not homeless people who don't have someplace and don't want to go someplace. So I just don't see the same apples for apples on the type of people that we'll be dealing with here.
So just, just to follow up to that question, is it correct in saying, I think there's twofold here. So the concern that I hear is that the Republic community, if they were released, and here in Republic, the community, the churches are not geared to be able to handle them, first thing. And then the second thing is, if they have state offenses, could they be felons, could they be violent offenders? Because, I mean, then there is risk of breaking into the nearest building, there's, there's these fears. I think what really the biggest crime that I'm hearing is what kind of assurances can the citizens of Republic have to ensure that if they're booked and released, they're released in Springfield at the Green County Jail, not in Republic?
No, I won't white worship, there's some criminals. However, my feeling is that the more dangerous those people are, the less likely they are to get out. In other words, if they're really a bad person, really a dangerous person, they're not going to be able to bond out, they're going to, they're going to end up in other county jails. I think probably the ones that you're going to see- I think probably the ones that you're going to see that are released from this facility are going to be those DWI arrests, those domestic violence arrests that we hold for a few hours to our cooldown period. Mayor can probably help me or interject, but I think in most cases, the more serious the crime, the less likely that it would be to get out or be released to anyplace other than a county jail. If that makes sense.
Mr. Self.
So Chief, I thank you for looking at our values and saying, hey, how can we be a regional partner with Green County? And so I understand your reasoning for seeking out, and I get that. But it sounds like when you were discussing through, you know, we have one side of, we want to be a regional partner, but we want safety in our community. And so when I, when I listened to you talk and discuss this, it sounded like the first agreement we had would probably have kept as far as the safety part, it would, it would have made that feeling a lot better, being that everybody was going to be released back where they came from. So to me, if we go one or two ways, I would say that we enter that agreement with that either we, that they shall take them back to where they came from, or I don't know if we can go into detail and say, you know, the minor ones that you've talked about are DWI. So when they're being processed, do they have to, they go through steps to sober up and then released? So there is some sort of process for that where they're not just being released and they're still intoxicated? So maybe if we say, hey, all of these we take back except the DWI bookings we release from here, that we feel are not as threatening as maybe what some of the others would be.
Councilman, those are excellent comments, and the answer to your question is yes. There's certainly flexibility, depending on what direction the council wishes to take on this topic in terms of the restrictions, in terms of the language of, or the, you know, requirement, the must, the shall, as opposed to help or whatever. So that's, that's, that's why it's in front of you tonight. If the concern is that it's not stringent enough, then that's an option available to you.
I want to, I mean, I want to be clear. I want us to partner with Green County and like Mr. Hutchison said, that, you know, we, this is our problem, we're all Green County citizens. We want to be there to help them, but we also want to protect our smaller community where the, there's not a numerous avenues. It's 60 Highway, there's not a lot of places. And so I look at it as, if my house is across the street from that jail, where do I feel comfortable?
And so it's clear too, the original language, I'm the one who actually, working with the city attorney, requested that to be loosened. And the reason why was that I am a strong believer in not providing language in a contract that we functionally cannot live up to on the backside. In other words, I didn't want to have a situation where it said, where the impression at the council level was that every prisoner that was released here would be transported back by their agency who was arresting or somebody else to their community and then not have one or two or a dozen or whatever have that happen. And that's why I asked for some flexibility in that language. So I'm the one-
I mean, I can understand, but like, we're talking about, you know, you're talking about neighboring smaller, smaller agencies. So like, what would be like Strafford, what would be some of those agencies?
Yeah, so there, Battlefield, Strafford, Fair Grove, Ash Grove, Walnut Grove, and Willard are, and I think I've hit them all. Rogersville, did I say Fair Grove? Yeah, Fair Grove. Rogersville is a portion in the city, but, or in the county, but it books most of its prisoners.
I think all of its prisoners are-
Webster County.
Which I can understand, and I get the whole time and efficiency of using your officers in an efficient manner. However, I'd still say that's way better than driving to Clinton. And so even if they're coming from Willard, Fair Grove, it's I-44. I mean, I understand their main, the only issue is, is they may not have someone on the force. But even like Battlefield, that's literally 10, 15 minutes. So what's great about Republic, and we're all aware, is we have some infrastructure that gets us to the places we need to go, so.
Hey, the only other thing I'd like to add is that I know in today's environment, this is very, very difficult, but I would just ask that for some trust. We are very, very good at what we do, and I would, I would hold our facility up against anybody in the state of Missouri, including the big facilities. And I would just ask that you trust us. I know that's, that's a hard thing to do in today's environment, but there are some safeguards in this document, and all you have to do is call us up and say, hey, this is not working out and we're done. So the other, one other thing I'd like to say is that the sheriff has also offered to pick up at least a portion or maybe all of the expenses, whatever, whatever expenses are may be as far as remodeling and that kind of stuff, so. Thank you, Chief.
If I could add to that, just, I'm a bit of an optimist. So I also believe in this, in this process, or I wouldn't have brought this before you or made the suggestion to bring it before you. I'm confident between their staff and our staff, we can come up with solutions if there's a concern by the public or a particular issue that occurs or we see it, we see an issue occurring. We have availability language in the contract from the city attorney that allows us to stop that within 24 hours with cause. Wait, am I right? Is it with cause or without cause?
Both with and without.
Yeah, there's, there's, well, one's a-
24 hours with cause, 45 days without cause.
Right. So there's, there's opportunity to say, stop if it's, if it, if it's not working. As I said, I'm the optimist. I believe that we can work together to find solutions.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes, on the major, if I understood him right, you said that on the release, that you have vans and or tows to bring them back to Green County?
Yes, here, councilor.
And in our papers here, it says inmate released after book and release to the municipality in which the inmate was arrested by such means as assisting the inmate to contact a private or commercial ride or by arranging courtesy transport by the law enforcement officer agency that arrested inmates. Now, in other words, they don't have to come up with their own ride. You guys see that they do have a ride out of here.
Right. I think, I think the point of that is that we're going to try several different means, including the two new vans that we just bought from Republic Ford to get them back where they belong. Our first, our first option is going to be to get them on the telephone and have a relative to get them. That's probably going to be our first priority. And then we'll, we'll use one of those means to get them a ride someplace out of here.
Reason I ask that, is you know there's a church just around the block, and I'd hate to see the inmates lining up at their doors wanting a ride someplace. To me, that wouldn't be fair to the church at all.
I agree.
Yeah, we're, we're in agreement with that, so that's part of what I was addressing. Obviously, there may be something we don't see quite yet with this. Obviously, this would be new, the jail, we've had that jail since 2002, but we've never used it in any capacity like what we're suggesting here. So we're going to learn some things from this, and that's the part. If we start to see an issue as you described, we're going to, and working with partners in the community, listening and working with them, if there's an issue, we, we put our resources to resolve it. If we can't resolve it, the option is to pull, pull the agreement.
And as I understand it, this here would be for how exactly, three months, four months?
Yeah, you know how construction things go. The agreement, I think, has terms of, can extend out as far as the end of the year, is that correct?
Yeah, it's anticipated to be two to three-month process. It's a construction project, so who knows? But it's anticipated, I think the contract actually, or the agreement ends January, or December 31st or something at the end of the year. So if it wasn't completed by then, or we had issues that we caused or not, or just without cause that we wanted to resolve, we'd have to either continue it at that point or stop it.
Mr. Knight.
Chief, do you have a facility out there, like if you did have a large influx, a bridge booked and released, is facility capable of handling, you know, a large influx? If that happened, I mean, you had, say, 20 come in at one time or something, to be able to secure them until they are booked and released?
Well, the key to that is the transportation out. So those who are going to stay in the system, not be released, but stay in the system, the faster they're booked and transported to the location that they're going to end up, whether that's at Green County Jail or another facility that, that would require the Sheriff's Department's transportation mode to be, operate in a quicker, faster mode, either additional personnel, additional van, or faster, one of the two. There is discussion, I mean, we have a single Sally port, which is a location for drop-off, that's what the Sally, that's what a Sally port is. Whereas I think you have a three or four vehicle Sally port currently at the jail?
Yes.
Four, three or four vehicles. We have a single vehicle location they can pull into, so it would require some coordination on our part. It may include backup of several patrol cars from different law enforcement agencies outside of our facility awaiting to get into that Sally port to get their prisoner in and booked. Those are logistical things that I think we would work through as we experience them to determine what's the most efficient. It may be that we determine that the volume is too high and the sheriffs need additional transport to, to be able to get those people booked and out quicker. And that's part of the discussion, the interaction that we would have.
Mr. Jones.
I've got a couple, couple of concerns. I guess, one is that, I mean, the agreement does have, we do have the ability to cease the agreement. It's 45 days. That's 2,200 more people that have to go through. After we said, this is not working. I fully trust that the, the plans are laid well. I also know that plans change and have to every day. You guys face it more than anyone in this room every day. My biggest issue with this is that it seems like Republic is, and this is a plus and a minus, we're all in, and the other communities don't have much invested in. And so I kind of understand what Councilman Self was talking about with, hey, we may be more comfortable as a community by seeing a little more investment at returning some of these prisoners where they need to go, if there was a little, a little more participation on their part. That's my biggest.
No, I understand that. And I, and so you all know, I did solicit all the municipality chiefs in the area last Friday in terms of that particular issue, expecting that, you know, what, what could be the investment on their part. I got two probably out of the seven or eight responses. The responses were, well, if that's a requirement, we'll do everything we can to try and accomplish that, but it'll be a significant impact on some of the smaller agencies.
Right, and to me, that's, so you had two responses out of seven?
Correct.
That's, that's disappointing at best. And the fact that none of them are here tonight is disappointing as well. Because this is, this is a, as Mr. Hutchison said, this is a county-wide problem. This is not a Republic issue wholly, so.
Yeah, I, I-
Not voiced, that's, that's-
No, I agree. I understand your concern too. I certainly, when we talk about a regional solution to anything, we talk about in government, the best circumstances is, is, you know, involvement by all. And this is a hard subject with this topic because, to be frank with you, nobody has physical facility resources to do this type of thing in this county other than Republic. So none of them could contribute the facility side of it, or the square footage side of it, I guess. I think what you're asking for is the time and the effort for transportation, or that would be their investment. And I think on that topic, this is an assumption on my part, but that some of those people can't, would be hesitant, like I was in the initial legal agreement, to make a commitment to this council that we will come out and pick up our prisoner every time, when sometimes they may not be able to do that. And so I, that's a belief on my part from conversations I've had, at least with one chief.
But that being said, that gives us with cause as opposed without cause. So by putting that in there, that they don't pick it up, it allows us flexibility to say we're out.
I don't disagree, and that's a 24-hour.
Mr. Campbell.
Chief, I, we're not going to fight that. If you guys don't want us here, we'll figure out something else, certainly quicker than 40 minutes.
Well, and to be clear, it's not that like, we don't want you here, we just want to be protective of our community in that regard. Again, we want to be a partner, we want to be a regional player, but at the same time, it's, it's more protection for the community.
Many of those municipalities that you named off don't have 24-hour coverage. Sheriff's Office answers calls for service and controls some of those towns after a certain time of time. They're very, very small.
Mr. Smith.
So a couple numbers here. To answer your question, about 35 minutes to Strafford from the police station. I drive it every third day. I know how long that is, so they're still relatively close. It's not like they're going half across the state. Like you said, it's, instead of driving over an hour to pick up somebody or drop them off, so it's still relatively close. Fair Grove isn't much farther than that. I did, I pulled up my map here. Walking distance from the police station to the closest house is six minutes. If I lived in that house, I'd be a little offended that we're looking at throwing, releasing prisoners out within six minutes of my house. That wasn't something that was known whenever they bought the house. I think that's pretty bad. Then my next question would be, have you discussed any of this with the fire department, the EMS agency that provides services to the county? Because I know whenever there's potential for DUIs coming in and out, there's also potential for medical response. Are they capable of handling that? Or is it going to take away those responses of the rest of the community? If it's going to tie up units from the rest of the community, that's, that's also something I'm looking at.
Yeah, so we did discuss that. Obviously, at the current facility, there's medical staff on, in their 24/7, so this would be a different situation. We're not talking about putting medical staff here, that cost is tremendous. We talked about utilizing the existing EMS in the event we had an EMS issue in the facility. So the answer to your question is, we would utilize as we currently do, even when our, when we do our warrant roundups and use our facility, we contact COX, ambulance, and make them aware that we're going to be using it for four days, and there's, you know, increased potential for a medical call. But other than that, there wouldn't be any additional staff, medical staff that would address that.
So I mean, that's, that's also a burden on their budgets. And then we don't currently, that I'm aware of, have any taxi companies, because I asked a question about Uber and Lyft several months ago, and it was told to me that we have no taxi companies available in the area. So if somebody got out, kind of arranged a ride from a family member, they kind of just called a taxi to get out of here, so then they're stuck walking down the highway.
Yeah, there's, there's plenty Uber drivers around in Republic too that could probably make up the difference, but you're right.
And then that brings on other issues that we have to go in and create ordinances for Uber and Lyft and all that, just as much as the city of Springfield did. That's why I hinted on that back in December or so.
Councilman, I understand that. I do want to reiterate, sometimes we get caught up in the details so much we forget. We're talking about a two to three-month process here. That's the anticipated process here. I realize it may go a little longer, but we're not talking about a full-time, permanent issue, this is a part-time. So when you talk about creating ordinances for taxis and issues like that, certainly if that, if that's necessary to do because of the circumstances, but I don't know that we would go and create a bunch of government restrictions for something that's going to be a short-term, short-term resolution.
Okay. And I, I appreciate that you're working on this. That's my biggest holdup though, is that the releases are not in the control of you or the Sheriff's Department. Prosecutor could decide to release somebody that one of our citizens may have to encounter that could potentially create another issue. And for me, that's kind of a sticking point. I don't, if it was in our hands and determining where they're going to go, you know, if we could take them back to downtown, to the Sheriff's Department, if everyone was to go back to there, if we just had a transport, and that was the thing, we only released them whenever the transport van could take them back to downtown, if we could arrange for something like that, just make sure that we're not releasing them out the back door of the police station.
Just so, I just want to make sure, the prosecutor wouldn't be involved in this process in any way, shape, or form. process in any way, shape, or form. My assumption is that if somebody was booked into the jail through this facility and transported because they were on felony charges and couldn't bail out, they would go to county jail. If the prosecutor wanted to release them, they would be released from another facility not here. So I didn't want, I just want to make sure that's, the prosecutor, I don't think, has anything to do with releasing at the booking processing stage. Major Spalding's confirming that.
You had something?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Chief out. I appreciate the work, and I'm going to go back to the same thing, what Mr. Hutchinson said. The overall issue with the jails, and we face that as a county, I don't know how many people understand the facts every day, that we're paying for 200 prisoners to be shipped out to six different counties. To hear that, and I want to say it's kind of penny-wise, pound-fullish, but it's what the situation we got, is we're talking about a release system, but what I hear is, we've got to protect the community at the same time, but we want to be a regional partner at the same time. It will not be fixed overnight. We're going to have to be a regional partner that addresses that. But that's going to be a much bigger issue that we're all going to have to face as a countywide residence on a ballot issue, I'm almost, you know, certain of, that we're going to have to address. We need to bring all this attention out for that subject matter. But given the situation where we're at, it would seem that rather than seeing it go down and not approved, I'd almost rather see us go and lean towards the First Amendment or the first original language that I know you wanted to change, because it seems like I'd rather see us do that, and I'd ask, if that's not the way it's drafted, then I'd ask for there to be a motion to make it that way, and then look at it two months down the road to see what it is and evaluate, because it is going to be, like you said, Mr. Jones, it's going to be an ever-changing process. It may not be ideal, it may not be logistically correct, but there is no cookie-cutter way to carve this thing up. It's been a mess. It's, as I think Mr. Hutchinson said, it's a crisis. And coming from the outside looking in, being here a year and you're looking at this situation, you've read about it, you've heard about it, there's been debate about it, we've got to do something to move to help expedite and be a regional partner. So thank you for engaging in that, having that discussion, offering that. But I think the original language that was there is what I hear and what I've heard routinely, and I don't think, I think to move forward, I think that's what's going to have to be in place, and that's what I would recommend that the council then do based upon the discussion that we're having, the layers we've had. That may not be workable, but I think that's probably in the best interest of those in the neighboring cities, is to incorporate that original language, and that would be adopted.
And if I could, if you want me to add what that language is, because I don't know that.
I need to hear it from someone. I'll read it.
David, that's not the original language, that's the original.
Well, then I'd make a motion, I guess, basically, based on the discussion, or I wouldn't make a motion, I can't make a motion. Point of order.
You're not going to get a second.
I won't second you, I'm.
Can we hold on just a second? Mr. Wilson had to stand up.
Do we got any elevator music to play? But that, to me, seems to be where it's headed. I'd rather not, I'd rather not say no. I do not believe that that's a direction we want to go, because we need to be a part of the solution, but I don't think we ought to leave that issue that you had. Your original concern was already in place, and it should, it should be noted and should be addressed, and I think that's a consideration.
Let's hold off for just a minute. I don't want to get too far into this without Mr. Wilson being in the room.
Do you mind if I cover something then, in the meantime, to fill the gap? Related to the topic, I don't want, other than that. I do want to express to you, you know, when we're looking at this from a cost perspective, you know, I want to make sure that, when I looked at this issue, I'm not just looking at what we're bringing forward, but if, if we aren't successful in bringing something forward, then what's the plan? Because it's more than just this issue. If it's not, if this isn't sufficient for the council and the community, which I understand, then I still got to come up with a solution for my agency, at least, at minimum, and then potentially a regional issue. My perspective is this, the city of Republic is in a really good position in comparison to most of the agencies in this county in terms of our staffing levels. So we staff at a minimum three officers at any one time in our operation. Some are zero. When I say some, I'm not including Springfield and Green County, obviously. So for me, four hours of what I'll call an officer who would be patrolling this community, providing that security and that concern that's important, removing that person for four hours of a 12-hour shift is significant cost despite the fact that it's not a dollar cost. And, and it's not necessarily something that I can come into you and say, you know what, here's the differences, apples and apples. It's not. So for me, it's really important that we keep that staffing and increase that staffing, to be frank, to make this community feel safe, and at the same time, try and balance this issue and concern about safety and if we're dropping people off. And that's, this is the wire, why this is in front of you today. Hope I filled that gap.
So before we move on to the language, I've Mr. Self and then Mr. Minn, Mr. Self here.
I was just going to say, the only other thing that I could think of is, and that's a good motion to bring up, but is there two, three, four other things that you could say that are similar to DWIs? That, hey, we book them four hours later? I mean, you said domestic abuse.
Well, yeah, so larcenies, thefts from retail establishments, could be auto theft, there's any number. Remember, I want to stress this, this isn't just what would happen in Republic. Every agency that operates in Green County with the issues that they, Springfield, Missouri State Highway Patrol, Green County sheriffs, all of those issues will be, those people who are arrested for state crimes in their jurisdictions would be brought here. So it's not just what experienced in Republic.
The only probable cause arrests that require holding period are a five-hour on domestic violence and a four-hour on DWIs.
Right. So those would be the ones that more than likely would be the release.
Yeah, I mean, for example, I talked with the Missouri State Highway Patrol captain. The bulk of theirs will be DWI arrests that they'll be dropping off, and they would, I make that sound, that's not the proper way, that they'll be booking and processing through this facility. So they're different than maybe Springfield, or different than Stratford in terms of the kinds of arrests that would be brought here.
Mr. Minn, oh, sorry, Mr. Self.
So then like, what I would be looking to say, hey, we use the shall of the first initial wording, but then put in there unless it's a DWI arrest. Can we, can we get that specific?
Yes.
Mr. Minn.
So I'm actually challenged with that. So first of all, I appreciate Green County coming. I trust their ability to execute and to provide a safe environment within the jail. My concern is that release, okay? So you could have somebody charged for DWI but have a history of violence, but they could only be in that jail because they got a DWI at that moment in time.
Correct.
And it only takes one person, released one time in one incident, to cause tragedy or, you know, have problems. So that's my, that's my big challenge there. The second thing is, is when you get released from Green County, the law enforcement present is very evident. When you get released from the City of Republic jail, it's open fields. There's not a lot of people, a lot of interaction there. So I, I think this is a great move. I think being a partner in this is a great idea. I just think we really need to look at that clause, that language, and how we handle the release of these prisoners. I think that's the big hang-up.
Yeah.
And if we can work together to find a solution on that, I think that we can be that partner, it's just a challenge for me.
Yeah, and your point's excellent, I agree with you. Just so you know, I mean, we did work in the last 24 hours, 48 hours, to try and bring a change in some language that we could feel comfortable bringing to you as a council after working with the Sheriff's Department, that everybody would be in agreement. Obviously, that would have been helpful. We weren't able to strike that in the last 24 hours, so the options available, as I said earlier, for the council to direct that or provide some direction to it, we're certainly open to anything.
So, Mr. Mayor, thank you. The language, I don't think this is verbatim, but this is close, that the language that you could replace, now therefore, the third section, that the facility, quote, that the facility shall be used for booking only and not for release. The arresting agency shall transport inmates back to their communities for release, or the sheriff shall transport inmates back to Green County jail and release inmates there. Only inmates arrested by or on behalf of the Republic Police Department shall be released in Republic, end quote. That's what I would change, Section 3. If that's the direction, rather than saying absolutely not, then that would address a concern that I believe that I've heard over the last several weeks, and was the intent of the original language.
I'd make a motion to, to change it to that, that wording.
I would second that motion.
Have a motion and a second to amend the verbiage in the agreement. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions?
I'll abstain.
Mr. Wilson will abstain, so that motion to amend the verbiage carries 7 to 0, 7 to 1. So now we will need to vote on the amend, vote on the resolution as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions?
I'm good.
Motion carries 8 to 0. Okay, we're moving on. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. As a note, side note. Chief?
Chief.
I think it's a good idea of what you guys are doing, and it looks like you've pretty much got all of your bases covered. I think it's a good idea.
Thank you.
That's my thoughts.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Under Resolution Number 17-R-6, for a resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, authorizing an addendum to a non-binding engagement letter with Stiefel, Nicholas, and Company to add bond refunding to the scope of services. I need a motion and a second?
Motion. Second.
Have a motion and a second, Mr. Cameron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This council, or maybe even the council before this council as well, would relate back to the budget session, one of the challenges that was very noteworthy in our budget was the amount of debt that we carry and the obligations attached to that. So basically, we started working on evaluating and having Stiefel look at our financial position, we met with him last Friday, to discuss opportunities for refinancing some 2010 and 2011 bonds. Over the life of the bonds, basically, what this, basically what this addendum does is through the Securities Exchange Act, SEC, they're required, before they can even evaluate these things on our behalf, that we, we basically create permission that allows them to look into these bonds and provide us opportunities. And so to officially engage them to do that, rather than the discussion we had, we need to have this addendum so that we can actually bring it before you. So before we can save money, we need to approve that it's okay for them to provide us information. But basically, in general, what we're looking at is about an $865,000 savings over the remaining term, without an increase in increasing the timeline. Probably the net present value of that is about $126,000. What basically makes this happen is the bond reserve, if you look at the fund balances in our financial statements, we're basically going to be able to drop those financial reserves and basically have those at a zero balance and utilize those to pay off the debt. So we're going to put that money into play because it's a bond reserve, but the new bond covenants will not require us to reserve, to maintain a reserve. So we're going to put that money in play. So to be clear, before we get to that discussion, this will not, while it frees up $865,000 worth of cash, what we're going to request, and I want to make sure we do this on the front end so that we're all on the same page, is that that money be reinvested into the debt to pay it off early. So we're finding ways not to take our money and say, okay, let's extend the debts out like we did the fire truck. One of the ideas will be to pay that, we can on the very front end, put that fire truck at the very beginning. Also, we just sold two apparatus, it would be one, but what do we sell that for? So that $25,000 could also be applied to that same fire truck. So talking about, what was it, 91 fire apparatus that we still owe $5,000 to, we can apply the $45,000 to the truck, also put that on the very front end of it, pay it off much quicker. But what this will do is, this will extend it out to about 2025, and it could potentially, with the payoff of the additional money from it, would pay it off in 2022. So if you recall, but that'll be on the discussion, but we're asking for your consideration for Stiefel to further evaluate this legally so that they didn't get in trouble with the SEC. So that's what this is all about, and I'll entertain any questions.
Anything from council?
We're just looking to save money.
Good job.
So understanding that this will save the city $865,000, however, that's not cash we're going to be putting back in.
Yeah, and again, looking at net present value of that, it's about 126. So you've got to look at all the money that's being exchanged, but yeah, the net savings, when you look at the sheet, it'll say $863,000. I mean, there's, but we want them to look at it some more because there's still some maneuvering that, we need cash on the general fund, and I don't want Jared, you know, to pay off Jared's cap to the community center, I think it would pay off earlier, so it's just terrible. So, yes.
Anything else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries 8 to 0. Onto the financial report.
Well, I'll keep it real brief tonight, due to the sake of time, but a lot has been happening in the finance department. We have our new finance officer who has actually started, Megan Payne, she's from Green County. We've been working on the five-year capital improvement, I mean, asset plan, which we're required to have by our state, I mean, our city charter. So that's in progress. We've had two presentations to the capital asset committee, improvement committee. I have also filed the annual audit with the auditor's, I mean, the state auditor's office in time, and filed our bond filings, which are called MS reports. And then we are currently going to work with Stiefel, which you guys just approved, on prospective bond refund funding, which is very exciting. We've received requests for proposals from the issuance that we issued for the integrated software proposals, so we have created a subcommittee with two council members who have volunteered to serve graciously, so I appreciate that. And so hopefully, we'll have the scoring meeting in two to three weeks, if we can coordinate everyone's schedules and bring back presentations to a broader group. So hopefully, everyone got the financial report that should have been sent out via email. Sorry it was late, we had a little hiccup this weekend, on Friday, with our accounting software. There was a little bit of scrambling of the bank reconciliation module. So it has been reinstalled and unscrambled, so on my computer, so hopefully it'll be done. I will have to re-reconcile that portion of it in the next couple of days and get that back on track. But looking at the statement I sent out, we had sales tax receipts that came in in July. I would like to remind everyone on council and in the public, our sales tax receipts that are coming in in July are actually from April. So those are the, those are the sales taxes collected from the month of April. And we are up so far year-to-date from this same period last year overall, 3.96, so almost 4%. However, I will like to use that with caution because they've been going up and down a little bit each month, but I'm optimistic as well as the police chiefs, that's good, a lot of optimists. And then our cash to actual, I would like to say, one of the most important reports that I think I provide to council besides the budget to actual reports is this, this, because when we were talking about the reserves on the bond funding, that is on this bottom section down here in the restricted cash. We're not allowed to touch this funding because it's a reserve for our bonds, and the lines marked down here that say 2010 bond reserves, that's what I'm, that's what would be used to reinvest into the refunding if we do that. I would just like to point out on this, the June cash receipts, the Fund 20, you'll see that, the unrestricted cash balance went a little bit low. We are going to transfer up, which was budgeted in the 2017 budget, from the reserves and some of the money from the sewer impact fee to help with the repair that was budgeted on the lift station. So those, that transfer will be made in July, and you'll see that reflected in the July cash report. Just one last thing, the budget year-to-date report that I gave you for June, you will see that overall, the general fund is at 51% of budget for expenditures. The water, wastewater fund, which is Fund 20, is at 45.94% for the year-to-date, and since this is the, ending of June is the halfway point of the year. The street fund 40 is currently at 21% of budget expenditures. The stormwater fund is only at 6.5% at this time, but I have some transfers that will be going out. The fire sales tax fund is at 201. Um, the fire sales tax fund is at 213% due to the purchase of the fire truck, but we've amended the budget to, um, we'll be amending it, and so that figure will change once the new revised budget is put into place. And then the Parks and Recreation Fund 50 is at 49% of budget. So overall, um, none of the funds are that far over budget, except for the files of fire sales tax, which we're remedying with the budget amendment for 2017. So, any questions? Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? Discussion? Thank you, Ms. Parks, need a motion and a second to accept the financial report?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero. Onto appointments and commissions, I would ask for a motion and a second to reappoint Sue Watkins to the Republic Housing Authority for a two-year term?
Motion.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero. Also ask for a motion and a second to appoint Dolph Woodman to the Board of Adjustments for a five-year term.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero. Onto reports from staff, Mr. Cameron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Great discussion tonight. Um, I'd like to, uh, welcome, uh, Karen Haynes, who is our new principal planner. Uh, she originally came, was from Christian County, moved to Destin, Florida, as the community development director, and has come back to our area and is going to be serving as our principal planner, so welcome to, to the city, to a very, as we discussed yesterday, progressive, moving forward, and looking forward to your, your participation towards the comprehensive plan, we're glad to have you. Tristan left, uh, but he's our new utility building supervisor, but, uh, welcome to him, and so, uh, and then Megan Payne. So Megan, we, we didn't make Megan get up before the, the podium, but if you look at the finance department, if you get a chance, come back through and meet the, the new additions. So after the meeting, of course, we have an executive, big executive session, but come by and, and meet the staff. It's, it's a, it's a new day, there's a new, uh, work that's going on, the finance department, the community development department, and all over the city, quite frankly. And so I appreciate the work and being, uh, thinking outside the box and the team that we, we, we put together, so welcome, uh, to the city, and we look forward to, to working with you. Uh, Debbie, I, I wasn't even going to bring this up, but I want to, I want to commend you and the staff. I do not know whether or not it's, you know, I'm tired of hearing about software. I, I just, I'm looking forward to, I'm, I'm really looking forward to it, it's like a bad penny. But before I go and say that it's a particular company, one thing in fairness to the software in and of itself, I do not know that the city in and of itself, as you know, these softwares have updates. Whatever software we get as we move forward, it will have to be a mandatory provision that we take the updates that come with the software. I do not know if we've kept up with the, the updates with it, but I know when it takes Windows 7 to run that, I'm not sure if that's because the software was not updated or there was a provision that we didn't do. I, so before I point fingers at a software, but I will tell you that, please tell Megan and everyone, we are doing everything that we possibly can, because it's embarrassing for me every time I open my email to say, please shut down Summit because we got to reboot it. That goes out to everybody. And that whole city's shut down, and so I, I don't want to see our new employees feel discouraged. This council has made a commitment to look at it, but I would make sure, whatever we do, that we take the mandatory updates with whatever system we look, we go with moving forward. Rhonda, excellent job on the, uh, between you and Debbie, excellent job on the purchasing policy. Uh, I know that what I originally had drafted and what it looks like today, uh, significantly different, so I appreciate that work. But Rhonda's doing us an outstanding job, I think that the work is, uh, is done very well. I think everyone from staff that I, all the feedback I received is this is a, it's been a very nice transition, very smooth transition, and that information is, uh, going very well. She's kept us in line also on our last agenda, or we got it figured out. So, uh, the last thing I want to, we met with staff yesterday, and, and basically on behalf of the staff, um, I want to thank the city council and the budget. They did allocate a 2.5% increase for all the employees, uh, 1% for a cost of living, and then a 1.5% in the 2017 budget, and this, and this last, uh, pay period, I believe the first pay period in July, that went, that went out to the, uh, to the city staff, and so at least those that have been here, uh, grateful longer than a year, had the other 1.5 provision, uh, those that were new would have received the 1%. But on behalf of the staff, I want to just extend that appreciation to, to the council for including that, because in this budget, we're still on a capital spending freeze in, uh, and for the most part, in 2017. So we haven't bought any police cars, you haven't seen any of that come before you, things of that nature. So there is somewhat of a, a low key on spending to some extent to make sure that we were able to facilitate those increases. So we put an emphasis on, and this council put an emphasis on, the employee rather than the equipment, so, uh, on their behalf, I just want to express the appreciation, so that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cameron. Now, the first thing I want to do is I want to commend Chief Lawton, because he was, he's, he had a, a problem that was, almost feels like a no-win. Uh, you're either faced with sending officers, what'd you say, four hours round trip? Uh, which also increases the liability of having, having a prisoner in your car, the possibility of an accident, the lack of resources that Republic is going to be left with if someone is driving to Clinton and back. Or you have the other side of this, where we use our facility temporarily to, for Green County to use booking, so we don't have to make that trip, but also comes with some citizens' concerns, so I think you did a great job. I, I want to tell you, I wouldn't have wanted to be up there, because it, it felt like a, a situation where there wasn't a whole lot of winning involved. So thank you very much for all the research, the hard work, uh, that you did that went into that. Thank the council for openly, uh, talking about this and finding a resolution, rather than, I think we all agree, we've tried to make it to where we don't just say no, we try to find a way. And I, I don't know how this will work, you know, when this is presented, but we tried to find a way, and that's what's important, to be a regional partner and try to keep our officers from taking the four-hour drive and the liability. Uh, next thing I want to say is also, I want to thank Debbie, I want to thank, uh, David, everybody who's with this audit. We're not just, we didn't just take an audit and say we're doing things wrong. You now start seeing mechanisms that are put in place to address the things that were identified in the audit. So the audit is for not. I mean, it's nice that we were transparent, had another auditor come in, but none of that matters if you don't start doing things to fix what was identified, and I'm appreciative to see that, and mainly the change in the purchasing policy, because as we saw unfortunately with meters, there are ways to get around any policy. Um, and that got found out, thank you, to you guys, but this gives the department heads the ability to work within the budget that we approved in the first place. So we're not asking them, oh, I know we budgeted this, but we want you to come ask us again. So if the fire department needs ropes, that was the example I thought of earlier, that was already budgeted. We, they don't need to be coming in here to ask us again. The budget's on them, and they should work within it, and as long as we know they're doing that, then this purchasing policy works just fine. Uh, the last thing would be how exciting it is to see that one of our goals was to make sure that we were reducing debt, and it's a huge deal with, is it Stifel?
Stifel.
Stifel. Um, but also caution that that doesn't mean we just put $865,000 in the bank, because that's not the case. We saved money and we put it back into the debt, so we're paying our debt off, and, uh, just like Chief Compton's doing with selling those fire trucks and putting that debt toward the 91 that we owed $83,000 on, so we're paying that down, hopefully get half out of it, uh, out of that fire truck. So it's really exciting that we're paying down debt, that, that helps makes us be much more healthy in the future. So I'll go on to council reports, and I'm going to give Mr. Bashir's two weeks, or two meetings in a row.
Two weeks.
Two meetings in a row, not two weeks in a row. Felt like we've been here for two weeks. Start off, Mr. Bashir's.
I have a suggestion that we have, uh, council with the recommendations and messages first, then have maybe mayor second, or they would be last. The reason I said that, uh, Chief Lawton, thank you so much.
Oh, I got you.
Always got the thing, I was going to say that we're.
Stole his thunder.
Thank you so much. This guy is a professional, I tell you. It'd be difficult to stand there. Uh, I used to present salary papers to our board of education, and you can stand there and read faces, and I'm sure you were reading our faces tonight, but he didn't quit. He's going back, and we'll try it a second, the option B. And this thing can work, but I, I really appreciate you. Also, I think it was yesterday, Governor Greiten signed, um, an executive order to do with opioids, and the state of Missouri is the only state, I guess, in the United States that doesn't have a drug type plan where drugs are tracked. And the legislature's last time did new thing, you know, any, but thing else. Anyway, he signed an executive order to, um, to start, I don't know if it's about the program or he talked about it, but it sounded like it was a good start at least on, on tracking this. Yeah, I heard on the news tonight, there was a 10-year-old boy out of Miami, Florida, that overdosed on fentanyl today, which is the youngest one that had overdosed on opioids. And in that newscast, they mentioned that fentanyl the size of a grain of rice, okay, is lethal. So it's really a serious situation. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Sorry, I, uh.
I thought you stole my thunder again.
Hit you with a punch again, I'm sorry. Mr. Jones?
Well, I'm going to piggyback on some of what Mr. Usery said to Debbie and crew, and what we're seeing, the changes taking place with the financial report, um, not just internally, but what's actually being conveyed to the city, or to, to the citizens of, of Republic in a very transparent way that's, uh, very legible and, uh, easily understandable for a guy like me, so that, I'm very appreciative of that, so. The only other thing I have is, is really something that I probably should just need to, to address with, with David or someone else, that, I guess, BNSF did a crossing fix at O'Neill Street, in, near O'Neill and 60, and they managed to make it worse, I know as possible what happened, so that one needs to be, someone needs to go drive over that, and don't do it on a motorcycle, I can tell you.
Sorry, what was I saying?
I think it's O'Neill, O'Neill Road, and.
Just off 60.
Yeah, so.
We got that. We'll add it to the project status list.
Yeah, it's, it's a good one.
It was bad before.
It was bad before, it's, it's worse than.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Wilson?
I don't have much to say, other than appreciate all the work that the police chief did on trying to get this regional set up, because there's a lot involved in that, and a lot that needs to be thought out and done right, and I think they're extremely close.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Mr. Self?
Um, just a lot of echoing of what others have said, but, you know, it, it's pretty awesome to see, uh, department heads, um, taking upon, looking at our, our mission, vision, and values, and, uh, you know, back to Chief Lawton, you know, reaching out, being a regional partner, being bold, um, you know, same with Debbie, you know, thank you for your, your team and your efforts. Uh, it's, it's, I know that in the daily grind, it may feel that there's a lot of trudging, a lot of, you know, getting into a rut, but, um, from, from being on, you know, in these meetings, and then watching that happening, uh, happening over the past few months has been awesome. So I know it's a tipping point, and, and when we get to that, we're almost there, you know, uh, it's just a little farther, a little farther. Um, it's going to be awesome, you know, we have a couple of new businesses coming to town, uh, you know, as, as far as the business community, it is, uh, exciting times to be in Republic, it's exciting times to live in Republic, and, um, you know, thank you to the businesses that are already here, but, uh, it's, uh, it's, it's just awesome to see within, you know, within a year, what's, what's changed and what, and what's going on, so thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Self, Mr. Smith?
Um, Chief Lawton, thank you for all the work on that. Um, I, I hope you guys can, you guys got a path now, and maybe this shows some commitment from us. Um, also thank you to Debbie for all the hard work and going through the software day in and day out, that, I'm sure that's frustrating, especially, I'm sure you stay here late, put in extra hours just to fix issues that it's caused. I've also heard great things from, about Garrett, out and, out and around, glad to hear that, glad, everybody's keeping our mission, vision, and values, so.
Mr. R.
Um, great job, Debbie. Um, going through what you have to with the software like we were talking about earlier, um, just props to you. Chief, great job, um, really, truly, that's, that's a hard, um, that was, that had to be really difficult to stand up there and, and have all those questions, and it, um, I'm just very thankful for all that you do. Um, I'm super excited about Monte Cristo, the Phase 2, again, just as my position, um, and our, you know, bank, I had to, I had to abstain, um, Glenn's done a great job getting that going, so thank you guys.
Mr. Mendez?
Um, I just want to echo what everybody else has said, and, um, Chief, for your tackling these hard issues, they've got to be, um, extremely challenging on all fronts, not just this front. So thank you for what you've done, your commitment to finding a better solution, and, and hopefully we can figure out a path forward that makes sense for, for the city and for Green County. Uh, Debbie, thank you for the homework and the reading material, I'm looking forward to that. Um, thank you for going to this link. This is some, um, well put together, well thoughtful, or just some thoughtful information, I think, that's going to help us get some insight into how we make the city's software product, uh, or find the right software product for the city. Um, Rhonda, I want to thank you too for taking the time to look this up for the, uh, special use permit. Rhonda gave us some more information, um, that we'd requested last council meeting. It's, it's got a lot of what goes into, to other cities and how they approach it, so I think it's really awesome. Thank you very much for doing that. Um, I want to welcome the new hires. It's always great to see the staff grow, um, especially hiring strong people and, and moving in the right direction. And David, thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Duckman?
I'd just like to reiterate what everybody else said, but I think myself, I'm very pleased and proud to be on this council and have the wonderful people, employees of the city that we do, that keeps things in front of us.
Thank you, sir. All right, if nothing else, I'd ask to go into executive session. No further action other than announcing adjournment by the mayor shall take place after an executive session that is scheduled as the last matter on the agenda, unless otherwise stated on the agenda or is allowed per RSMO 610.02. RSMO 610.02, 1.1, pending and/or potential litigation, closed session, closed vote, closed record. Need a motion and a second?